Welcome, everybody. Adequate notice that the meeting to be held by the Belmar Board of Education on Monday, May 13th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. has been provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 231, Public Clause 1975. Notice the meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the principal's office of Belmar Elementary School, 1101 Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on April 30th, 2024, and notice that the meeting was transmitted to the Ansbury Park Press, the Co-Star, Municipal Park of the Borough of Belmar, and the Lake Como School District on April 30th, 2024. Do we stand for the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
[inaudible]
Hey, Sherri Adams.
Here.
Ms. O'Malley.
Here.
Mr. Jack.
Here.
Brian Conklin.
Here.
Amy Fay.
Here.
Rebecca Herbert.
Here.
Michelle Lomas.
Here.
Paul O'Malley.
Here.
Michelle Crain-Dy.
Here.
And the first is a quarter of business is a presentation from the PTO.
I believe she's running late.
Oh.
She had a situation, Kendi, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to have a few minutes executive session, and then we'll come back and do the PTO. Can somebody move to go to the session? Just a second, all in favor? We'll be back as soon as we can. Are we ready for the PTO? PTO out. Yes. Scott. It's not keep you waiting. So far.
I'd like to now introduce the PTO for a special presentation. [applause]
for Kendi, who had car trouble on her way here. We're happy, we're here to present the recipients of this year's Belmar Elementary School PTO scholarships. We just wanted to give a little background regarding the criteria for the scholarship. The student must have been a graduate of Belmar Elementary, must have attended for a minimum of three years, the student must be a current student, a current resident of Belmar or Lake Como, the student must be graduating high school this June, and must be attending a college or a trade school. Applicants were also asked to provide an essay with their application. We ended up receiving five applications and two winners were chosen. They are both in attendance tonight, and we would like to congratulate JP Connolly and Jack Preston. [applause] I would like to come up so we could take a picture.
Yes, come on, Jack.
Please. And he's going to be in touch with both families regarding the scholarship.
Yep.
Thanks, boys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That was worth waiting for.
Yeah.
Thanks, honey.
So I just want to make a quick statement to the public. So for the 2425 school year, there's not going to be any change to our programming for music and performing arts, and it will not be a reduction in force this year. We will be reallocating some time during our schedule, but this will continue to be a full-time session. [applause]
Okay. At this point, we have comments from the public on agenda items only. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Okay, go to the superintendent's report.
So we'll start our congratulations to the Laskey family for their beautiful day girl. Brian Laskey's director of facilities, and we're really proud of them, very happy. Spring concert was great, performance were excellent, as usual, so really great. Our hip grades were certified and released back to the districts. It's posted on our website for reference. We reported them in the fall, there has been no change to that. A special thanks to our staff that made our high dosage tutoring so successful. That was after-school money that was given to us by the state to help our students who during the pandemic lost a little bit, and so it's just another tool we got to use. Special thanks to them. We had an awesome neurodiversity celebration, which I'm sure that you saw, it was like a, it looks like an eight, but it's an infinity symbol. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to make something that big work. It'll show up in a couple of seconds. So special thanks to Mrs. Vassili, Mrs. Fabian, Mrs. Dana, Mrs. Brown, people who serve therapy to the lions, and to Mr. Saunders for volunteering his time to get that picture that we've got. NJ LA testing has started, and so we're really proud of our students for giving their best effort. We always start on Tuesdays, and everyone starts testing on Mondays. I don't know who does that, but here we need everybody to, you know, get their brain wrapped around school on Mondays. We do, we did have a smart cookie celebration right before testing, which was kind of a, some activities that get the kids amped and kind of ready for testing. And then we also have our smart cookie awards that we give to our students during testing. Now, our teachers can't tell if the kids get questions right, but you can tell if the kid's trying. And so if kids use the time, use their scrap paper, they can get smart cookie awards, they get a cookie, and then they also get put in for a raffle. One of the, so they get gift cards and different things that we've been able to get. And then this year, we started a new program, which you probably also saw, which was work hard pizza parties. So we came up the idea of this is a music town, this is a beach town, this is a fishing town, this is also a pizza town. So I decided, let's hit up the pizza spots and see if they're willing to offer a free pizza for our kids to come with their friends, a large pie, and soda for four, or soft drinks for four. And I got a bunch of groups to say, yes, Esprit Social gave us a few pies, Vinnie's gave us a few pies, Lucci gave us a few pies, Reyes, Federico's, and a missing one, Mama Luke's also gave us a pie. So it was really nice, the kids got half of them today. At the end of ELA testing this, this week, they're going to be raffled off again. So it's kind of neat for a kid to win a pie and some pizza, you know, and so that was kind of a neat idea that we're really proud of. Champions will offer pre-K after care for next year. So starting next year, we've had regular K to eight, but now our pre-K program is expanding to five classes because we got state funding, and there was an interest to do after care for our pre-K kids. We sent a survey out to our community, people said, yes, we want that. And now we have people, enough people signed up to have a pre-K after care program so that families who are coming from a daycare scenario and paying fourteen hundred dollars probably a month for daycare, now get our free pre-K and have a fraction of that for after care, you know? And so it's a big savings for families, and it's still convenient for them. So we're really happy to offer that. I know it's a lot, I keep on talking about. Woodlock Pine Strip is coming up in two weeks, eighth graders are excited, the fishing club has been hitting up the waters of Belmar and reeling them in. Hopefully, you know, we'll have another boat trip this year, if that's possible. We removed the tree near, near 11th Ave, so if you're by the, don't get in the circle if it looks weird or different there. We had a pine tree that our harbor said, you probably should take it down because it's dying. So we took it down, so it's going to look different. If you go over there, you'll notice. You wouldn't know why. So thanks for the PTO, for Mr. Softy Ice Cream Social, for our fifth, eighth graders, they absolutely loved it, so thank you, PTO, again. Their Mother's Day Jewelry Sale went really well, I think they raised, I think that like a couple thousand bucks or fifteen hundred bucks.
Seventeen, fifty.
Seventeen.
Thank you, Mrs. Glab. Mrs. Glab, that was amazing.
And support a field day as well. I wish everybody a fun field and road the weekend, don't move your car. And special thanks for our baseball field, which is, I think I talked about that last time, with Barry Trogu and the talent to help fix our baseball field and make it look the way it does, it looks great. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what about our baseball team that might, should be moving?
Yeah, yeah, they might be going into the playoffs, so we're going to, you know, let the season end, and maybe we'll have a playoff opportunity. So it's very exciting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the regular and executive minutes, meeting minutes for the April of 2024? All right, it's Herbert. Any corrections or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Al.
Yes. Personnel items?
Personnel items, non-tenure teachers and the board salary be approved for 2425 school year. Approve the restructuring in the secretary positions, distribute critical responsibilities with a reduction in how many secretaries we have in consideration, so CD amounts there. Now, the list of parent professionals be rehired for the 2425 school year as approved, and the list of facility staff be rehired for the 2425 school year as approved.
Someone move the personnel line? Okay, any comments or questions? Personnel. Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Al.
Yes. The policy items? Is it just second reading to the ones you talked about last time?
Yeah, just second reading that we went over last time, so just, I'd like to move that most into the second reading.
Okay, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Yes. The education items, operations?
Submission, comprehensive equity plans, the even of assurances, and then the update of field trips for the field trip spreadsheet are approved.
Okay, somebody move that. O'Malley, second. And Conklin? Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Yes. The education items, operations?
Submission, comprehensive equity plans, the even of assurances, and then the update of field trips for the field trip spreadsheet are approved.
Okay, somebody move that. O'Malley, second. And Conklin? Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Yes. The finance items?
I need the finance, some monthly certification as of May 30th, that there's no budget set in line. As far as the resolutions, and just the resolutions, number one, it's allowing me to pay the remaining May and bills and transfers and reporting at the next boardroom in June. Number two is the board secretary and treasurer's report for both March and April. Number three is the monthly transfer report for both March and April. And number four, the budget transfer report for March and April. And then number five is just our, the monthly certification of the treasurer's and secretary's report as of May 30th.
Okay. Can somebody move the finance items? Ms. Jack, second. Ms. O'Malley? Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just switching.
Fine, I'll go whenever cold.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Just keep your hand on your toes. Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Mr. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Do we have Madison Square Report?
No.
Okay. Communications, we did get correspondence from Ms. Lockwood regarding the secretary's restructuring. Any other correspondence? And old business, we have a lot of old business.
Old business. The BES 2425 school calendar. So the last we talked, we discussed going out for a survey with the community, and so we went out for a survey with the community and shared the results with the board. We had to just consider the following things, law and contract, district and instructional priorities, sending districts, and then the school community. So we decided to go out to the school community in both English and Spanish for families who are in BES or BES and Madison Square High School as part of the questions. We did QR code signs, which are over there, and, you know, people were saying, I don't have any money, I'm like, I don't need your money, I'm just wanting a boat. And so I'm like, I'm not fundraising here. And emails, we sent emails, we sent texts to families, so if you're a family in town, you got a text to get to the survey. The results are here, the results are now available, we closed the building last Tuesday. And so we're in a position where for the overall one verified, you have one, one per family vote, we had eighty-nine responses for our strategic plan, which, you know, was extensive, and we put a big effort into, we had about forty-nine responses. This one got eighty-nine responses, so almost double. We had quite a few families, fifty-eight point four responded that they'd like Draft B, February break, four point five said it doesn't matter, or they don't care, and then Draft A, the traditional one that we're currently on, that type of, was thirty-seven point one. So there was a twenty-point swing between Draft B and Draft A. That being said, we had said that we're going to have a discussion about this, that the results of the survey don't automatically dictate the calendar. So, but we did have a presentation from our community, quite a few people for BES-only families, it was about sixty percent, said they wanted the change for BES, and Sklon families, about fifty-two percent, with eight point seven percent saying that they weren't sure it didn't matter. But the trends are pretty similar. That fifty-eight and thirty versus thirty-seven was pretty consistent across all demographics, so all major demographics. That's where we are there. It represents, the votes represented about a third of BES students, with families having multiple kids, but having one vote. That's where we are for, for that part of the calendar. So now the question is, you know, which direction are we going to go with? There were two options, there was Draft A and Draft B. The union said that they would be okay with both either, that Draft B to February break wouldn't be a problem for them. And if you want to take a look, for a last look at these, kind of decide what you think is...
Do you have thoughts and recommendations?
Recommendation, I mean, when we take a look at the data, there's pros and cons, just like any difficult decision. There are pros and cons for either one. You know, for instance, you know, when we take a look at instructional priorities, we have more days absent on those three days than typically. So for instance, we had an extra fifteen absences a day over two years average, a day, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Time before testing matters to me, as far as I want to have as many days as I can before the test. What is a more important thing for me is how we use the time we have, right? I think that that has value, using your time. Using your time is more important than having a day before the test. That being said, as a superintendent and instructional leader, I really want days before the test. Facilities and maintenance, can get some work done in the gear, if something breaks, they will have the opportunity to do that. We'd be open later, so their summer work would have to wait. So like everything else, it's about balancing that. AC is now available in June, when it wasn't before. Sending districts all have the same break, some of them have different options for when they have off, but Mounds and Avon both have Presidents' Day offer students professional day for staff. So if we did go with B, I think that that's the way to go.
Yeah, that's the one, man.
Is it right?
Yeah. At first, I thought I wasn't there. Right here, it's on the January.
Oh, it's on the January. Ooh, yeah, we fixed it already.
Because I'm like, what do you mean?
This is all copies. Yeah, these are all copies.
It says February, though.
If you take a look at the, if you see that, if you look at February, you're right, it is, we did fix it already, but I didn't fix it on these copies. So I apologize for that, but it is already fixed. We'd be open later, okay, we're already. Tuition, if kids get tuition to come here, they'd be able to mend a Sklon. I don't know of those other options for being open. The Friday before spring break is something that people really have an appetite for. I think the spring break, I mean, the February President's Monday is probably the best option because we can actually work with Mounds and have our own professional development. When it comes to the school community, the concern was, do our families, are they in line with a change if we do change? And so it looks like they are. So I took a look at all of it, and then if I broke out the votes, just for a data view, I said one per family, if I broke it out for those families, how many children did they represent? The number was skewed a little further towards the B calendar.
Okay.
And across demographics, it was similar, and there was a representation from, from the community. So I, if, if you're asking me what my recommendation is, my recommendation is to listen to the community, and I would say that we go to Draft B. But that's only because I'm a data guy, and that's what the data tells me.
Okay, so we already approved A, right? Earlier?
In the past, yeah.
Yeah. So if we're, if anyone wants to move to B, then we need a motion in a second for that. Question for B, second. Check, anybody want to make any comments or statements about it, for work on? No?
So according to the schedule, it's two days, the school year is going to be two days longer.
It will be two days longer because the union agreed to come in on the Thursday before Labor Day for professional development, which they did this year because we're getting a new roof. But, you know, I need it for them to be on board if I'm going to ask them to come in outside of their contract. And so they agree that they would if we went with B, that they won't be.
So school ends on a Friday instead of Wednesday?
Correct.
Was there any comment from the teachers? What happened to the teachers?
Well, that's the union, the union would be teachers.
They said they were fine.
They would be fine with that.
You need to hear it on Tuesday.
Is there any other days would be that they're not getting on for the students that they were going to get on?
No. The, the thing about it, it's three days, right? It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so we take that Tuesday day before, so the kids will start. You'll notice that from A to B, when you take a look at A, the kids start on the fifth, when you take a look at B, the kids start on the fourth. So they're here one day earlier, but then only two days later at the end. And we're still out that twentieth, which is typical of all the other sending districts.
So usually, we, we start the Wednesday after Labor Day, and it's going to be the Tuesday?
Correct. And it's because the teachers are willing to come in on Thursday. We did that this year, but like, it was a roof thing, and I was like, hey, we got to get the roof done. So that was the reason. And the fact that this is the longest December break you can get typically, you know, we're looking at eight days. I think the following year is either seven or eight, and then it starts to go down to seven or six for a couple of days for a couple of years. So this is, this would happen when you have this kind of maximum December break.
And this is going from the next school year on?
Well, next year's calendar is, is going to require a vote from the board again. So we're only approving 2425. If we're in a circumstance where we recognize, hey, there's a different need, and there's, we get to set the priority for our calendar, right? And so this is for now, but we know that when you change something big, it might take a couple of years to change back, or maybe it doesn't, I don't know.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Good roll call.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Jack?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nickley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Yes. Right, and new business, we have to have a meeting for the food service contract has to be selected before the end of May, but what I asked Mr. Bortley is if we could just arrange to do as a virtual meeting, we might have an easier time scheduling it, because it's only going to be that one agenda item, and maybe if there's a bill, let me speak it. So what were you thinking?
So, on my calendar, so I was thinking of either having it either the 23rd or the 28th, which is a Thursday or the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend. So when we changed this meeting, I forgot that I had this RFP out that we're getting our proposals tomorrow, and then you have to board accept them. And because it's the food service, every five years you have to do this, we have to get this done by the end of this month. So what I'm trying to do is, we just have to have a special meeting just to get this approved. So like I said, it's either the 23rd, which is the Thursday, or the 28th, which is the Tuesday, it's up to you guys.
I'm buying it, though. I'm buying it, though.
You guys have a preference? No?
Do you?
Tuesday.
Nope.
[laughing]. Make a statement.
Yeah.
Is it Thursday, January, as many of the kids again?
That, that's the next Thursday, the 30th. Yeah, that Thursday after we move.
So the 28th, then?
Okay.
Yes.
We could change it?
It could be seven, and it's supposed to be a virtual. Sure. Might be my first meeting on the [inaudible]. Any comments from the public on any other?
Yes, Carrie White, Belmar Education Association, also, I want you to let it out in here. Just wanted to say thank you to the board and to Jimmy and Michael, who met with us and really, we really sat and talked for a long time and had, you know, we really collaboratively discussed a lot of different ideas and ways, and it was just a really productive, productive meeting. And, you know, we came up with a lot of different ideas and worked out a lot of stuff that has to do with funding. There's clearly a lot of passion and excitement from the community about our programs, and we're going to kind of hold everybody to the, to the fire to help us out moving forward. And, you know, just, I appreciate you doing what's best for kids, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Was it, is it only in regards to what was just discussed?
No, any item.
Okay.
Right, just can you stand up and just identify yourself?
Well, I'm Erica Wortman, I have on 218th Avenue in Belmar. And I was wondering, how many families are there in the school district? I know eighty-nine responded, what's the total number of families?
I'd have to take a look at the family report, but that represents one-third of the students. So it was a hundred and thirty-five students that were represented by those votes. So I guess if you multiply that by three, so you're looking at two hundred and sixty-seven is what I'm going to say might be the average. Yeah.
And I was just kind of piggybacking off of the, you know, all the districts kind of being equal as far as with, not for the timing, but I just had a comment that I was, or question, that I was wondering if there was ever thought about offering geometry for the eighth grade students since all the other Massacre sending districts offer them. I contacted all the school districts, Belmar is the only one that doesn't offer it. And I figured this kind of goes off of, you know, this calendar also being the same as the other school districts, so it kind of makes sense. After seeing my son and some other eighth graders recently take the Monmouth County Vocational School entrance exams and struggle on the geometry sections, I thought it would benefit the students who are trying to get into more of these schools and be set up, better set up for success. For example, my son currently has over a hundred average in math at this school. But he still did very poorly in the math section for the vocational school because he didn't know the geometry. I heard from multiple other families that also their children went, also didn't do well in the geometry, and most of them didn't get it. My son happened to get into one of those schools, but still his grades were not good in the math section. I said, it's a little confusing that other schools within the sending district offer higher level courses and alternatives for students who qualify. Along with that, it's clearly something that must be in the curriculum across the rest of the county that's on the county vocational school testing. We're doing these students a disservice by not having any higher level courses or some other type of alternative available to help them prepare for the next level. The school has programs and services for students in need, but they, but we, for students in need with extra help. But it seems that students who could be challenged more or provided higher level opportunities at the school don't seem to have that same opportunity. I'm bringing it to the board's attention for consideration for the future. Clearly, it's too late for a current eighth grader. And honestly, I don't think my younger one will be impacted. He's not really, he's not, doesn't care about his grades like my older one does. So it's not going to impact me, but, you know, we're my family. But I just think it's something that the board should look at. Because, like I said, he's, does very well, all of his grades in every class is over a hundred. He's in the SAMs, it really, nothing challenges him. And I'm sure he's not the only child at Belmar, and there's going to be plenty more coming up. And just especially with the geometry. Like, they were not given, I talked to, I don't know if anyone on school talk, but I talked to every kid that took the test and every parent had the same exact, that they were just lost because they were never shown geometry before. And I know we have all these other, what's it called, the, like, there are other times that they have for?
Surf session?
The surf session and stuff, like, maybe there could be something like that for the kids that are interested or the kids that want to be challenged. I think he's smart, I don't think he's that smart to have a hundred and three in all of his classes. You know, I would like to say he is, but I just feel like there's just a disconnect that we're so much, always putting so much impact on helping the other kids, but the kids that are at a certain level, they're just never challenged. Like, he does extra stuff at home just for himself.
Yeah, it's funny, I put surf session when you started, when you mentioned that.
And I think that there might be opportunity there to offer enrichment for students who are doing really well in math, to do some geometry work. Or maybe even ask the kids that have taken the test, there's not that many that took it this year or previous year. You know, just to see how they felt, but it seemed like everyone, their ELA was.
With MCVST, they might be like, are you, you know, cultivating answers for tests? But I under, I get your point, and I think that there's.
Yeah, just not the exposure, so.
I think there should be, there could be opportunity there during surf session.
And I think especially this year, there was kids that applied to multiple schools, and they didn't get in because of their math, you know, the math grades. And I think if they're exposed to it, you know, just to show a little bit, at least they would have some idea of how to.
We have had students take geometry.
And like I said, he did get in, and it was whatever, it's okay, but still, I feel like even his math score compared to his ELA was very behind. And he's doing great in math, and I don't, I just think they're not given the opportunity, they're not exposed to it.
Yeah, we'll look at opportunities.
If there's ever.
I know that we can do a remote option through Mounds, which we've done.
Yeah, which we've done, yeah.
Where students attract there. But those kids that kind of lie in the middle there, maybe there's an opportunity for surf session to offer.
Yeah. But just as, I mean, the other schools are all pretty small, Mounds, Spring Light Heights, and every single one of them offers. I spoke to every school, and they all offer geometry. Those kids take free algebra in sixth grade, they take algebra in seventh grade, and they're all given the opportunity for algebra in eighth grade. I mean geometry, sorry, geometry in eighth grade.
Thank you.
And it.
Just so you know, when my kids went here many, many moons ago, we were the only one who had algebra of the sending districts.
That's great.
They went to Massacre.
But now we need to keep up with the rest of the, no, I think that's great. But it'd be nice to just keep up with, for doing it, for the calendar. I think we should do it education-wise.
Okay, any other comments from the public on any item? Okay, we have dates to remember. May twenty-third is the Hindigore Show, May twenty-fourth Field Day, May twenty-seventh Memorial Day, school close. May thirtieth to thirty-first, the eighth grade trip to Woodstock. May thirtieth, the pre-K end of year program. June twelfth, the eighth grade dance. June thirteenth, the eighth grade graduation. June fourteenth, the last day of school. And June eighteenth are June fourteenth. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you for coming in.